As part of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alrighty, if we could please silence all cell phones and we're doing the open public forum. Item A, yes, no? Is that what we want?
Yes.
Smart School Investment Bond, Lucinda Kirsten. Yup? This is mine.
Good evening.
As soon as we can.
This is the second phase of the board took Smart School Investment Bond Plan that we proposed in November. We came to the board and discussed it and they voted on the draft. The draft has been on our website since before the November meeting as per the regulations for public comment. As of this time, I was the person that they were supposed to email or contact. I have not, I've been contacted by anyone, so I'm going to take that as notice as good news. I did have a few teachers ask me not about the specific plan, but about like our future plans. So, since they don't really relate. One of the other speculations, our specifications for submitting our Smart School Plan was that I needed to reach out to contacts at the area colleges and the education field. So, I contacted Fredonia and they thanked me for contacting them and sharing our plan with them. I also contacted Dr. Wendy Patterson at Buff State. Since Buff State does have a technology and education master's degree, she cast our plan over to some of her colleagues and they did respond. So, I thought since I don't have anybody else to respond, I'll let you share with you what they did. One of them was Christopher Shidley. He's a faculty member in the technology department and he had some questions for us, which we may take back and discuss with our M A team. Summary, love the Chromebook Google Classroom idea, not a fan of iPad minis, been there and failed. Why iPad minis, it's a question. One, what are they going to do with them? Two, what are the core concepts? E L A math, science, or social studies will be learned by these tools? Three, how will the evaluators know that the iPad minis make a difference on students' ability to demonstrate learning about the core concepts? Two, how will the following be measured? Perhaps this is not the tool to describe these measurements. One, enhance differentiated instruction. Two, expanded student learning inside and outside of the classroom. Three, benefits students with disabilities and English language learners. And four, contribute to the reduction of other learning gaps that have been identified within the district. Three, how do the ISTI standards tie in with the C C L Es in E L A in math? The N G S S when it is approved? And the new social studies standards? Four, Chromebooks with Google Classroom are a powerful learning platform. Five, in summary, how will student learning be improved with the technology? Sign, Mr. Shidley. I think actually our next presenter for the GLP iPads, which is one of our pilots in the second grade, will answer some of these questions that he proposed. The second person that responded was David Lance, who used to be the Buffalo City School District Coordinator for Technology and is now Professor at Buff State. He said, "Thanks for sending me the E D C S, the technology plan for review. Having written many of these plans for the Buffalo schools, I found it refreshing to review this document. I found the document to be well-prepared and evidencing solid technology planning practice. I was particularly impressed with the district's instructional alignment with the ISTI standards and the district's support intentions that include the Winnebago Services and Erie Bosse's. Both intentions offer the district solid footing for the future. As you know, ISTI instructional standards offer internationally recognized solid thinking for the use of technology in teaching learning settings. New York State's regional information centers, Winnebago and Western New York, offer sets of far-reaching technology services that are fiscally well-supported via the state poster system of funding. They provide competent, secure, technology-based platforms for the district students. In addition, the district will find available appropriate support and assistance for their E-rate efforts and with the federal schools and libraries corporation to support its infrastructure over time. The infrastructure plan appears to be already in place and will evolve to provide broadband with, to support robust speeds and adequate room for large data endeavors. Their instructional equipment choices, intentions largely to Chromebooks and iPads, are congruent with national trends for these purposes and provides generally efficient instruction platforms for teachers and students. In short, I find this plan to be laudable and wish them well with its execution." One additional comment, I noticed that E D C S D had adopted the Hour of Code Program for district implementation over a year ago, Buffalo News article, not something I submitted, so if you've read about us. This is an excellent developmental coding curriculum and another indication that this district is moving in a technology-sound instructional direction. I hope my comments are helpful for David Lance.
Nice, nice.
At this time, I am supposed to open it up to the floor, then if anyone else here has any comments. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Anybody else? Any questions or comments?
Please try to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda.
Next up would be GLP students in the iPad presentation.
I guess I would add to the coding. I actually had our librarian, Mr. Clancy, come up to me today just saying, "I could not believe how the coding is taking off at the GLP." He's doing tons of it at the library level and he has all been, Lucinda's always been looking at some of the things that he's gotten for coding. He's part of the grant and we got him devops. And he said even during the free time when the kids have all these choice activities, he said they are just taking off with the coding and they can't believe what they can do. He said they're partially guessing what he can do in coding, so he's loving it. But without further ado, I can tell you that I have a group of students who are busting at the themes to present to you. They've been waiting since December when our meeting got snowed out. So, they are so excited to share with you their iPad initiative. So, they're part of the pilot classroom in second grade who have a class set of iPads thanks to the Board of Education supporting our initiative. I am certain that after their presentation, not only would we answer all of those questions about how it's aligned to our curriculum and supported, the teacher could probably share with you for hours how she measures their achievement, their success, aligns it to her curriculum. And I'm sure a group of parents are who would tell you that their children have surpassed their expectations in learning thanks to the digital content that they have every single day. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce Mrs. Sandy Westrissel, our second grade teacher, who has been a key component to the success in technology as a GLP. She's been a colleague and a leader to all of her peers in the GLP and she's very excited with her students who are going to present this evening. So, let's give them a round of applause.
Hi, I'm Sandy Westrissel and these are my students. So, when I say your name, give it a little wave. Morgan, Adeline, Richie, Gavin, Amelia, Nina, Maddie, Liam, and Haley. Okay, so we would like to, first of all, thank you for this opportunity that's been given to our class by approving the iPad initiative. My students and I would like to share with you what we've been doing with our iPads so far. And I would like to, if I can explain it well enough, but they actually can explain it better than I can, I would like to dispel the myth out there that iPads are just more screen time, that we're just doing games, we're just doing drills. That's not, that's not really what we're doing in there. My students, because we have these iPads, because it's added to our curriculum, we have learned about collaboration, about problem solving, about communication and teamwork. They have learned reflection, independence, goal-setting, decision-making, how to explain and describe. They've learned how to research topics and how to take notes. All of this, we have incorporated iPads into that and it just, they've gone far beyond my expectations for them. One example is Maddie's going to hold up, no, Gavin's going to hold up the life cycle project. So, they worked in teams for that and they had choices where they had to research about their life cycle. And instead of reading the module, the listening and learning module like we usually would do out loud, we had groups researching different ones, so this is an example. But some of the choices could be to scan the Q R code and watch a video. Another choice was to read an article in Readworks, which we're going to talk about tonight. Another choice was to go on Brain Pop and learn about life cycles, or they could read trade books from the library. They had to do the research in their group, they had to take notes on their iPad, and then they had to make their poster and then stand and explain about their life cycle. And they did a much better job than the module did at that point. So, that to me is real life and without these iPads, it wouldn't have been as exciting and as interesting. It adds so much more choice to their day. They've also been given choices in their own individualized learning, sometimes guiding them down a path that I did not even see coming myself. They've learned how to teach each other and present to a group and so much more. But the best part of it is we have a ton of fun. We really have a great time in there. It kind of, the kids are great, so they're a great group to start with. But the iPads have added multiple ways to show what we know and not just paper and pencil anymore. Many of these activities have given the children and I immediate feedback. For instance, we're going to talk about NearPod, IXL, Kids A to Z, Readworks. Before we came tonight, we had, the kids and I had a team meeting and we discussed what we felt we should talk about tonight, what apps they loved and why, and what we've used these apps for. So, I'm going to tell you about a few and explain it a little, but then they are going to explain what they love about it. They actually asked to do that, they didn't want me to do all the talking. So, Adeline is going to first talk about, so when it's your turn, you're going to walk up this way. Adeline's going to talk about NearPod, which is an app that we can use in groups or with partners. There's virtual field trips, there's quizzes, there's a way to explain. I can push out activities from my iPad. They do answers, they send it to me, I can push it back to the crowd and we can look at responses for instance, word problems, how did somebody solve this? Okay, I'm talking too much, it's your turn.
I like NearPod because you can see what other people put up for their answers and that you can go on virtual field trips.
And then another app that we love is Stop Motion and that's a way to, it's like claymation back in the day. Yes, I'm aging myself. We do spelling words with that and they take pictures and it makes it look like the spelling words are moving around the page. And Richie's going to talk about Stop Motion.
I like Stop Motion because you can make your own movies. And I also like it because you can read the out of your spelling words.
Awesome, good job. Okay, so Haley's going to talk about Kids A to Z, which is very individualized. It's a way for the kids to listen to good reading, read a story themselves, and then work on comprehension questions, which they have to get right and they have to look back in order for me to let them move on to the next book.
I like Kids A to Z because you, it reads to you, like you read it and then answer the questions. But I like it best because it reads it to you before you read it, so you know all the words.
You can hear fluent reading that way. Stay here, you're next too. And then another app that we practice our math facts with is Extra Math.
I like Extra Math because there's this chart every time you're getting ready to practice a skill and you can zoom into it and it erases the ones that you've already got mastered and you can zoom into the ones that, that you're still practicing.
Gavin's going to talk about Spelling City.
I like Spelling City because you get to practice your spelling words and there's different games you can do on there that are fun and you get to practice your spelling words at the same time.
And then Scratch Junior is new for me. It's a coding app that they've been learning in the computer lab, but since we have our own iPads in the classroom, they can also do it in our classroom afterwards.
I like Scratch Junior because you get to code these characters and choose backgrounds, any background you like and you get to choose your own characters. And then you get to code them forward, backwards, and they can jump through stuff.
And Morgan's going to talk about Readworks. Readworks is an individualized program. I can push articles out to them based on their interests and the readability. I can send different levels to different students based on what they need and then they send back to me, they submit to me comprehension questions, either multiple choice or written response, or both.
I like Readworks because she, she like puts articles out that you can read and then after you do the article, you can take questions about it and when you're done with the questions, you can see if you got them right or wrong. And I like it because of that.
And then another one that Morgan is going to talk about, one of my personal favorites, is Seesaw. Seesaw is an online portfolio. Each student stores their best work there and it can be made into Q R codes. So, Maddie's going to hold up her activity. We actually had a Listening and Learning Module, Westward Expansion, and at the end of the module, the children wrote a book and we stored the book that they wrote. It was an online book, on Book Creator, which I'm going to talk in a minute, but we stored it in their Seesaw online portfolio and it creates a Q R code. So, we hung these in the hall, they made a quilt, and then we hung that up and anyone with an iPad or an iPhone or anything with a Q R reader could scan that and they could see Maddie's book on there. But the one part that the kids love is they can put comments on and they can like it, like, you know, and it all has to come through me and be approved through me, so they can't put anything that's not appropriate. It will be on there and I approve it, but they love that part, that they can look at each other's work and write comments like, "Oh, I love the font you chose" and "Look at that great picture you found." I like that part too. We also used Seesaw to create a Listening Center for Miss Farrell's kindergarten class. I have the book and, oh, it's right here. So, the children read, they opened up Seesaw, they turned on the record and they read these books out loud. And then they created Q R codes, which we glued into the books, and then we gave the books back to Miss Farrell's kindergarten class and they used their iPads to listen to books being read by our second graders. So, that's in there. And the other part of it is parents can log on, they can get the Seesaw up, they can log onto it. I just talked to them about that. So, some parents have and they can see their child's portfolio at any time. Where in the past, you would have to come into the classroom, I would give you a folder with paper copies and you would be able to see what I've saved of your child's work, but now they can just get on their phones or iPads or computers at home and look at some of the work that the kids have put aside that they feel should be in their online portfolio. So, Morgan's going to talk about Seesaw a little bit more.
I like Seesaw because you can see other people's work on there and like you can see their Westward Expansion books and Harriet Tubman books. And you can see your own work and there is like class stuff on there.
And then the next one I want to talk about is Book Creator. Book Creator, they can make any books that they would like to. We usually have them follow some kind of theme, so right now, we can only make one at a time because it only lets you make one at a time. So, right now, they finished a Harriet Tubman book and that's on there. And the children can put whatever they want, type it in. They can, we do a pre-writing activity first. They type it in, they can add clip art and design it how they want. And then when it's all finished, they can have the book read to them aloud afterwards. They can push the read to me app. And Nina's going to talk about that.
I like Book Creator.
What's the best part of Book Creator? You guys are serious. Why do you like it the best?
I like Book Creator because you can change the fonts and you can make your own books and like Harriet Tubman, and you can change the font, you can make it read to you.
Cool.
Okay, and Nina's going to talk again about IXL. This is an app that helps them master second grade math skills. And if, what I like about it is, yes, they earn rewards, but if they get it wrong, it explains why they get it wrong and they have to go through and see how to do it correctly and then hit a button that says, "Okay, I got it," before they can move on. Why do you like it, Nina?
I like IXL because when you get a question right, your points go up and if you get it wrong, your points go down and then it shows you what to do. And like if it's just a number or you have to do a sentence and at the end, if you get 100, 1 through 100, you get a medal.
The next one we're going to talk about is also math-related. It's the H M H Player, which is a companion to our Go Math program. I like that app because I can see every child's strengths and if they need extra practice, I can assign just what they need for practice. So, every child's H M H Player is individualized. They just took a math test and if they struggled with one particular skill, I can push out to their H M H Player just that skill to practice so that I know they're getting extra mastery. And what do you like about it, Amelia?
I like that at the end, you can see a video before you do a math problem and it will show you how you can do it.
She's talking about the Math on the Spot videos that are in our Go Math program. It's a Q R code again and it's puppets that teach them how to do the math videos. It's just one other way besides me standing in front of them talking all the time, but they love me. Time for Kids is another one that we don't do as often as I would like, but Amelia would like to talk about it.
Time for Kids, you can like read the Time for Kids magazines, but instead, they're like on the iPad.
Good job. There's only a couple more. Liam Ursing would like to talk about Storyline Online. So, come on over Liam and tell us about that.
I like Storyline Online because... Famous people read to you.
And the last, well, there's two more we're going to talk about. Class Dojo is an app that we have and it, yes, it does keep score of the child's behavior and they can self-regulate their own behavior. I give them points for positive reinforcement, but it's also full of many videos and lessons on character traits like perseverance, empathy, growth mindset. One activity we did was they watched some videos, a series of videos on perseverance and they read about some famous people who have struggled to reach goals in their life. And my students then worked with partners, took notes on their iPads, highlighted from the article that they read, what they felt was important and what was the struggle, and then they wrote a paragraph about that struggle. And Adeline's going to talk about that.
I like Class Dojo because at the end of the day, whoever has the most points gets a V I P and the video show you how to solve problems.
And the last one that Richie wants to talk about is called Show Me. It's very similar to Kids Doodle, there's two that are the same. It's an interactive whiteboard and he's going to talk about what we do with Show Me.
I like Show Me because you can write anything you want on that and you can make your own book.
Good job. Okay, so those were our favorites. There's actually a whole lot more we could talk about and every day, we learn about more. It's a learning experience for me as well as them. But we're learning together, what we like and what works and what helps them learn. My students now would like to take a minute to show you some of these apps that they like, especially their Seesaw online portfolio and Book Creator. Please feel free to ask them questions. So, Adeline, you're going to find Mr. Shepherd. Maybe they'll raise their hands so you know. Go ahead, remember, don't come in. Don't come in, you gotta go. Maddie, you're going to go see Mr. Horshel. All right. Sorry. Richie, you're going to find Mr. Breeden. Morgan, you're going to find Mr. Burns. Gavin, you're going to find Mr. Cuddy. Nina, you're going to find Mrs. Grunder. Amelia's going to find Mr. S...
Okay, those are all kids.
I'm going to say it wrong. Haley, you're going to find Mrs. Anzalone. And Liam, you're going to find Mr. Murphy.
Right here. That's all the work that you've done that's been scanned in like this and this. Very nice.
Thank you for letting us share with you. So, this will be the end of the shared.
Sandy read it to you.
What about that Seesaw?
Is she reading it to you?
Those are the ones you read for the kindergarten class. Now, can your parents see it? Do they have a Seesaw app?
You can like see their work.
Now, would you have this book in your lap too?
What other app besides the Seesaw?
Yeah, like that.
Oh, I got you. That's so funny. And now this was, what did you do this with? This was a research project?
That's very nice. Not only does it read, but it tells you what word it's reading at the same time.
So, it's just like, hi. Like associations and stuff. This is awesome. She really liked it. Yeah. Thank you.
Very nice.
Somebody asked you. So, you can use it at, like you could log in here and say you need to. Cool. The guy yourself? Class Dojo. Yeah, you know, your kids do. It's kind of like the best part of being... Great job presenting. Yeah, it's okay. That was awesome. Well, thank you for bringing this. Who? Who? Stand here or does she want her iPad back? They're trying to find the Show Me app.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I mean, this is just a YouTube video.
Oh, my gosh.
Does it look like that? Does it look like that? Ah, I'm going to look at that, see if I can get it for school. Show Me app, iPad. So like it's used, like using a dry erase board, except it's on your iPad? So if you're writing something, can your teacher see on her iPad?
Okay, parents, thank you so much for bringing your children out this evening.
That's cool. Well, thanks. Look at her, honey.
Ms. Anzalone's going to ask you, does it allow you to take a picture? If you could meet in the hallway for a group pic.
It's like a little kid's face.
Hopefully, if you found any of those questions aren't answered, you got them answered right now. One of the things we find with the digital content and giving them the tools is that they have a whole different learning experience than we probably did in second grade. We often forget that they are second graders. And you hear things like, we have a team meeting. We give them their tasks. We set them free. They go do all of these different tasks, and then they come back together. They share out. These are tasks that are a whole different learning set of skills that I don't think we gave students in the past that we're giving them now. And we're seeing them go so much farther with the learning because of it. So we're so thankful for the opportunity to have these tools in our classrooms. So thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to share them with you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That cleared, that cleared the room pretty quick.
Yeah.
Okay. Item C, the Claims Auditor Confirming Purchase Orders. Diana Ray Walker.
Actually, Tom's going to do that for...
Oh, okay.
So he's doing pictures.
Okay. Do you want to move on to buses with Mary? Let's do buses.
Let's move on, yes.
Oh, Tom snoozie loose, sorry.
He's got pictures.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, that's okay.
Executive decision.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's right.
So I thought it would be important, it's been a couple years since I was up here. Last time I was up here as a driver, asking you not to contract out. So I thought it would be important. I know a lot of time was spent a couple years ago looking at our bus fleet, looking at new vendors, deciding which way to move forward. I thought it would be beneficial to take a look at where we were quickly again, where we are right now, and where I'd like to go next year. I'd like to look at buses on a yearly basis. I think open competition is good for us. I think it drives our prices down. I think it keeps our vendors honest. And I think it always gives us the best product that we can get. So if I can... Basically, I'm going to just do a brief history, as I've said. I'll show you where we're at right now with our fleet. I'd like to take a look at the difference between the two buses that we have now. The decision was made a couple years ago by the board to move with the International bus, which is the Leonard supplier. The drivers have in the past been accustomed to the Freightliner's. I'm going to take the vendor out of the picture. We're just looking strictly at the buses themselves, the manufacturer, regardless of where they come from. And then I'll tell you what I'm thinking for the next school year. So very briefly, I do have copies of the handout. I'm afraid to walk with this and make notes, but if we could pass this around so you can follow along. I know it's hard for some to see, but we had a rocky road of bus purchases. We had a nice spike for a couple years there. We, right, we ended up with a lot of buses that were really old. They started to rot out. At the end of the 1314 school year, we had 24 large buses in the fleet, and that's what I'll focus on tonight because that's what I'm looking at getting next year. We entered the school year with 24 in the fleet. We had nine that rotted out during either the summer or the beginning of the following school year that wouldn't pass DOT inspection. So we were way down. We ended up borrowing from other school districts and from the vendors, as you know. With the plan that the board came forward with for the replacement and the taxpayers giving us the thumbs up, we were able to get four new buses the following summer. And I had a little bit of money left over, and I bought four winter beaters, basically.
Winter beaters, very great word.
For $20,000, I was able to pick up four new buses that got us through a rough patch while we rebuilt. We still have most of those in the fleet, but as they start to cost us money rather than put money into a 14-year-old bus, we're, we're holding on to it. We'll trade it in, and we'll get our money, basically get our money back on the trade-in for the new buses.
And just before we go to the next slide, also to point out, as I said, the most telling thing on this slide for me is February of '15, where you see the 15 buses, which you touched on, went from 25, or 24 to 15. That year was not a fun year. I can definitely tell you that.
That was not a fun year.
But what we've seen now is with that department, they are consistently now through buses and buildings and grounds spending $4.60. So the voters know every year, they're going to see about $4.60. There are no spikes up or down, one way or the other, so at least they know what to expect.
So can you just put a little more words to what you mean by $4.60? You're talking in code.
400, I do that sometimes. We all do that in education, my apologies. $460,000 is usually the amount that we are now actually seeing on the propositions after the budget vote. So for district vehicles, $460,000 per...
So it's a proposition on the vote, on the day of the vote?
On the day of the vote, correct.
Okay, so after the board, of course, made the decision to move forward with International buses, which was a little bit new for us. It took the drivers a little while to get used to them, but we now have about 15 folks who are very well-versed in both of the buses, have a lot of experience with both. And as you can see from the picture, at first glance, they're very similar. I've driven both myself. I've surveyed the drivers that really have a lot of experience with both of the buses to get their opinions. I've talked with the mechanics. And I encourage those who really didn't have experience with the new buses not to give opinions. So the decision moving forward is really based on two years of experience with both of the buses. And as you'll see on the next slide, they're both good buses. They're both good in the snow, which is vital in this area. They both handle the hills really well, Shinsis Hill up in the Boston Hills. We don't have any trouble with either bus. The kids don't complain about comfort issues in either bus. A school bus is not a fantastic riding vehicle, but they both do pretty well for the kids. They both have, it's an option, but it's something that I like. It's called a pedlock. So when you're loading or unloading a student, it automatically sets the emergency brake for you. It takes one more thing that you need to think of out of the equation. So you can concentrate on loading and unloading the kids. It automatically locks the parking brake. When you close the door, you press a button, and the parking brake releases, and you can move on. Most of the options that we like are available on both of the buses. They both have tinted windows, which may seem frivolous, but it keeps the temperature down when we hit April. And even though it's only 70 outside, it's 90 on the bus. The heated mirrors keep the, all of the mirrors, there's a lot of reliance on mirrors on the buses. It keeps them all cleaned off. It keeps the fog off. It keeps the rain dried off and everything. Both manufacturers offer a tilting and telescoping steering wheel. Really important when somebody like me is riding, driving a bus, and Mr. Breeden hops in the same bus. You really need to be able to move things around. We have a 6'4" driver. He and I need very different things on a bus. They both offer an engine brake, which most of us know as a jake brake. Basically, the transmission slows the bus down, so you're not relying so heavily on the brakes. A school bus has air brakes, so if you rely on your air too much, you can drop your air down, and it can lead to bad things. And they both have an air seat, which oddly enough, we found out, is an option. First quarter came in, had a peg that you had to hold, and somebody lifted the seat. So we had them swapped out. So we've learned now to make sure that we have an air seat on all of the buses. That being said, there are two, there's really one major area of difference between the two manufacturers. The Freightliner is on the left-hand side. The International's on the right-hand side. It's probably a little difficult to tell from the picture, but if you look at the Freightliner, it has an enormous windshield, and it has a hood that's angled almost like you would think of in a minivan. The International on the right-hand side has a smaller, boxier windshield and kind of a beefier front end, and it reminds me of kind of a Dodge truck. And when you're sitting in a driver's seat, loading and unloading and watching kids get on and off buses, you want to have the best vision you can have. And you want to rely on those mirrors as little as possible. So the more you can see without relying on a mirror, the better and the safer it is for the kids. So the International on the left-hand side has, I'm sorry, the Freightliner on the left-hand side, which is the Matthews bus. I know I said I wouldn't use vendors, but to kind of bring it into terms. It had, the Freightliner has a larger windshield. The drivers feel that it's easier to see the kids. With the windshield being set the way it is, it kind of sets up a little bit. It shortens the length of that hood. It lets you see the kids in front of your bus without relying so heavily on those mirrors. So that is just a body style difference. It's not, you know, it's not an available option. It's just the way they are. The drivers prefer driving the Matthews buses because of the windshield and the design of the hood. They feel like they're safer transporting the kids and loading and unloading. Again, this is just another picture of the windshield. Another thing that we did not realize with the windshield is with the Freightliner on the left-hand side, with it being angled and us having terrible winters here, the ice and the snow builds up, and it's the driver's responsibility to clean those off, you know, before they go out on their run. It is really tough to clean the International windshields. They're straight up, and if you're standing next to your house window is one thing, but that thing's about eight feet high, and it's really tough to clean them off. Your natural flow when you're cleaning is, you know, with that International, you're kind of straight up and down. It's hard to get pressure on it. There's a little pedal that kind of flips out. It's about this big around. You can step on that, so you can get up higher. Super dangerous. It leads to falls. It's just not a good thing to do, but it is there, and we use it. So although it doesn't seem like a huge feature for the winter when we're trying to keep the windows clean, having that angled windshield is a lot easier for the drivers to get at. Besides the style of the front end, we've talked about the design and larger windshield. One option the International bus does not offer us at all is a movable pedal. Just like the steering wheel can tilt and telescope, the Freightliner buses offer us a button that brings our pedals closer to us. So again, when somebody like I hop in a bus, I bring my seat all the way up. I bring my pedals to me. I can reach everything. When I hop in an International bus, I pull my seat all the way up, but I can't move those pedals. They're staying where they're at. My short little legs have to drive with my tippy toes, which is not the safest way to drive a bus. Again, not available on the Internationals. They're talking about trying to engineer it in the future. Right now, they don't have it available, but it could come down the line. The last major difference between the two manufacturers are actually the brakes, not so much the brakes themselves, but the response time. When you press the brakes on a Freightliner bus, it's like you're driving your car. You press the brakes, the bus slows down. You have a real good reaction. On the International bus, you really need to put your weight into those brakes. They don't respond the way that you would expect them to. Our drivers, because of breakdowns and repairs, flip back and forth a lot between the buses. They've all complained about the International brakes. They say that there is a better quality brake that they could put on the bus for an option. I like the idea that the good brakes come with the standard bus. But that's just me. And so those are the, those are the main differences. Those are the things that, that the Freightliner bus can offer us that the International can't just because of the way it's designed or because the options aren't there yet. They could come down the road. They may redesign a little bit. But what I'm looking at for this coming school year, because this year, we bought three little buses. I'm okay with those for this year. For this year, I'm looking at just big buses. So I'm going to recommend that we solicit quotes from both vendors. But if I can get the pricing where it needs to be, our goal in our department, after talking with the drivers and the mechanics, will be actually to buy the Freightliner buses for this year. And again, I'd like to go back and forth each year and get quotes from both. International might redesign. They might come out with these movable pedal and a better braking system that answers a lot of our problems. But for the year coming up, I have recommended to Tom that we move forward if I can get Freightliner where it needs to be to go back to Freightliner for this coming year.
Mary, you said to me too, in a conversation, that for some of your, your taller drivers or heavier drivers, that, that they're, they're okay in either bus because they have the...
Yeah, our taller folks, and I hate to use Mr. Breeden as the example, but you're a lot taller than I am. Our taller folks are comfortable in both. They, you know, like I said, if I get in an International, I'm driving with my tiptoes. A guy with long legs, and we do have a few, that are comfortable in both. They have the legs to reach the pedals. They have the muscle in the legs to, to press the pedals the way they need to. Not that our ladies don't. I'm not saying we don't. But both when you press a brake pedal, you expect it to stop right away, not have to put a lot of weight into it. So yeah, we do have some. And we did, of the 15 drivers that did the survey, we did have two that do prefer the International for various reasons. By and large, though, most would like to go back to the Freightliner for this coming year. And again, next year is a whole different game.
What's the cost difference?
Currently, it looks like they're dead on. Yeah.
Did we go to the Internationals because it was cheaper than Freightliners?
I was not involved in that discussion, but as it was explained to me, the Internationals were chosen because they were the lowest cost. We did not test drive them, as far as I'm aware. We didn't see them until they showed up on the lot the first day.
Their proposal a couple years ago was lower, so now they're just...
Can both vendors provide quotes for both types of buses?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Can both vendors provide a quote for International, so that it's like an International...
No, each vendor sells only their type. Like the Leonard sells the International, Matthews sells Freightliner.
Is there any difference in the miles per gallon?
Per gallon, no, they both suck.
Well, yeah. Yeah, well, I know that.
They're both about 8 to 10 miles a gallon. It's not good. We have looked at maybe moving to a gasoline engine in the future. That technology is just coming out now. We're not ready to be a trailblazer. And actually, neither manufacturer is offering that as an option this year anyway. But it's something we've thought about. The gasoline consumption is supposed to go down, but gasoline prices also higher. So we really need to see the bus first before we look down that road. But it is, it is in the eye of the mechanics to look at that when it becomes available.
And the other thing to let the board know, and further on down the agenda, we have something on there for best value language for the board to adopt. And basically, what that's saying is, when you're taking a look at prices between competing vendors, generally speaking, if you were going to be bidding, you would take the lowest vendor. Now, once you pass the language for best value, you could provide a rubric of what the district is actually looking for. Can't make it impossible for one to do it, but for quantitative and qualitative, and then based on how they're answering, you don't necessarily have to take the lowest bidder. It's the lowest responsible bidder based on the rubric you're putting together. So that will aid a little bit from year to year as well, because your needs can change as years go by.
Question about, I mean, just like Western Ford and name another one, you know, Ford dealer, can you say, okay, two Freightliner dealers compete?
All I am aware of really are Leonard and Matthews. Are you aware of more in this area?
I'm aware in New York, Leonard sells International, Matthews sells Freightliner, and there is a Bluebird vendor in the area, too. We have never had a Bluebird in the fleet. I don't think our guys would be happy with us if we put a third type of bus in the fleet. So I think at this point, we need to stick between the two, but they are the two vendors for those buses in this area.
And my guess is if we're looking for service on, on larger jobs that our, our group cannot handle, if we went to Virginia and bought a bus out of Virginia because it was a better-priced service from Matthews or Leonard, might not be as, as responsive if we didn't buy the buses from them.
Right. If we went to an out-of-state manufacturer, we would really be looking at repair costs on our own. They would, of course, wouldn't have a service technician that can come out. One of the advantages with both of the vendors at the moment is they're, they're semi-local. One's in Dansville, one's in Byron, Virgin. Not very close. There aren't a lot of bus manufacturers in Buffalo, but they do, if we have a problem, they're here the next day. They, they do work closely with our guys. Both of the manufacturers have a great service reputation. So that, you know... have a great service reputation. So that, you know, they're, they're both on par as far as that goes. We've had great response from both of them.
So Mary won't necessarily beat them up. So I mean, we have state contract prices. It is basically what would end up being a sealed bid. She will give them the rubric ahead of time to say, here's what we're finding to be important on there.
I also plan to make them understand that we're not going to go back and forth on price. They want their very best price right up front because we don't, we don't ask for a lot of options on our buses. It's basically a standard bus with a few options. So there's not a lot, there's the state contract pricing and then of course, they can give us a discount if they want. Of course Matthews wants back end very badly, I'm sure. Leonard is not going to be happy to find out they have competition this year. So I think this year we'll see some good pricing from both vendors.
How many older buses do you still have in the fleet, Mary?
We have, if you take the four used ones that are
Your winter beaters?
Out of the mix. We have the six new ones from the past two years. And then before that, most of the buses are 2008 and older. We had a large spike of purchasing in 2008 and 2009. So we're, most of our fleet is still about seven or eight years old.
Which is about the limit. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had thought about seven to 10 years for the light fixed base.
I think that you did a range.
Yeah.
I think seven to nine or seven to 10, one of the two.
Which is about the end of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mary. That's very, very good.
All right, working backwards, the Claims Auditor. Diana Ray Walker.
I am, I am the not-as-good-looking version of Diana Ray Walker.
Are you on?
So that's not me. That is still Mary. There's nothing to show at the moment. So I'm just gonna talk about what you guys have as the attachment for the Claims Audit Report. Diana Ray was supposed to present in December. She's not able to be with us now. She has some obligations that she just couldn't get out of. So she asked me to step in. First of all, let me just say, I should not be the one stepping in, but I am because she's not able to be here. A Claims Auditor is an independent person, independent of the district. They are, they don't take directions from me. They do their own thing. So when you hear me talking about it, I'm interpreting as what I would think she would say and trying not to be biased in any way, shape, or form because part of what she finds affects our department as well as every other department in the district. So just so everyone knows, the Claims Auditor role in a district, the Claims Auditor reviews every packet that goes out. So everything that we spend, we actually have someone say, well, I would like to buy pencils. They put in a requisition. That requisition is approved. It gets converted to a purchase order. That whole packet then goes to the Claims Auditor who reviews it and makes sure that the proper processes are followed. Once she is done with that, then we actually cut a check and then we pay the vendor and then we get the goods. That's how the process is supposed to work. It's not how the process always does work. As the Audit Committee heard on our last audit, sometimes things get ordered before that full process actually takes place. So one of the recommendations from the auditor is that we put something in place to prevent as much as possible, goods from being ordered before that process is followed. So what you see here is Diana Ray's first attempt to put together a list, which was with your board packets, of the confirming purchase orders. Confirming purchase orders, basically what that means is the purchase order was put in after the product was ordered. Sometimes there are reasons why it happens, sometimes there are not. So since this is the first time she's doing this, she just took an initial stab. So I'm not necessarily going to go through every line with you. I just at least want to describe to you what you're going to be seeing. She will make this a regular part of her claims packing on here for you. But what she did from column-wise is first she put when the invoice was, basically when we were billed by whoever the company was, when the purchase order date was. And if it's on this report, the purchase order date is after the invoice date, which means it's after when, well, we got billed for the service. Next, she put number of days confirming. It's always good to know because sometimes it could be a day or two. Sometimes emergencies happen. A water line burst, they need to get it fixed, they do that. No one's around to actually necessarily approve the financing, but you got a burst line, what are you going to do? Next day it's in there, you may have a confirming PO of a day. If you see something in there for 365 days, I really would find that very hard to explain why something's in there for that long, but we have some here for 58 days. So, so that is knowledge for you guys to start seeing. The month that it actually happened and check number, who the claimant was, and the reason some of this information is in there and we chose these columns or she chose these columns is so you can start seeing patterns. If you see the same vendor again and again and again, if you see the same department again and again and again, then it really is part of the Audit Committee and the board as a whole to say, why are we always seeing the same vendor? Why are we always seeing the same department? Is there a reason? Is there a way we can make it better? Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. So the claimant's on there, the amount of the check, the department, and her problem, all the problems basically say PO after date. So right now, there's not a lot of detail on that one yet. So right now, we have about a page worth for July. Not a huge shock, only because we're ending one year, beginning another year. So as we're beginning another year, we're starting to set up all the processes for that year. Sometimes they'll send a bill before all the processes are set up. Not that I'm making an excuse because my department is on here and I, just like anyone else, we should see what departments are on there. So you guys will see this with each and every four packet. Questions, thoughts?
I think it's good.
It is good. We should all be held accountable.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, item three, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Moving on, routine actions, approval of consensus items, that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the Administrative Memorandum A through X.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained. Motion carried.
So if you could just back up for a moment to number seven?
Number seven?
Wait, where are we going? So that was part of the consent agenda, but since I do see Carol King here, I asked us to just back up for a moment. Carol has asked for a leave of absence for a year. She will be incredibly missed.
Absolutely.
And everybody wants you back.
Yep.
Please come back. So, thank you, Carol.
No, I wanted to come say personally.
All right.
So it's approved?
It's approved. Yay.
Oh, she's not on that one.
No.
Colleen's not on that one.
This is the approximate time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements and respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit. Going once, twice.
Hello, my name is Kira Petraschinsky and I'm a clerk typist in the high school. I'm here today asking the board for their assistance. Back on November 16th, I was reading the red binder and noticed that in the minutes that were approved, in the October 19th fourth education meeting, a clerical staff person was paid for not taken for two years. The following day, I emailed just Mr. Murphy and asked what documentation I needed in order for me to get reimbursed for unpaid lunches in the year 2012, 2013, when I was working in the bus garage solely with no supervisor in the office. Those of you who are unfamiliar with what happened that particular year, that year Eden did shared services with Springville and there was no one in the office after 9:30 or 10 o'clock in the morning. I have since then emailed Mr. Murphy and I also copied Mrs. Anzalone four more times. On December 29th, I did have what I thought to be a private conversation with Mr. Murphy in which he took notes and told me he would look into this and get back to me. It is now January 18th, two months from the day I originally sent my first email, and I have not heard anything. All I'm asking is that I be provided with the information on how to proceed so that I may be compensated for the one year of unpaid lunches like the other clerk typist in the district. I want to follow the same procedure that was done prior to this and I'm seeking just what protocol was followed so that I be provided the same gave the work. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to new business, item A, resignations. Item one, accept the resignation, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Margaret Sullivan be accepted effective November 9th, 2016.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Number two, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus attendant Judith Gustus Stoy be accepted, is that right? Yes, no, sorry.
Yes.
Be accepted effective January 7th, 2017. Mrs. Gustus Stoy's last day of employment will be January 6th, 2017. The board and administration wished to, wished to thank Mrs. Gustus Stoy for her seven years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item three, accept resignation, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of speech pathologist Colleen Griffin be accepted effective July 1st, 2017. The board, the board and administration wished to thank Mrs. Griffin for her 36 years of service to the district. Wow.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Item four, accept resignation, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of GLP teacher Margaret Wyman be accepted effective July 1st, 2017. The board and administration wished to thank Mrs. Wyman for her 25 years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item five, accept resignation, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of elementary teacher Barbara Cook be accepted effective July 1st, 2017. The board and administration wished to thank Mrs. Cook for her 21 years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
I've been hearing the word grandchildren a lot.
Moving on to appointments. All appointments will not be effective in service to the district. Pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Here are the recommended motions. Number one, appoint teacher aide that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kelly Beller be appointed on probation as a teacher aide replacing Margaret Sullivan effective December 5th, 2016 and ending June 4th, 2017. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item two, appoint bus attendant, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Judy Pleschi? Gosh, I should proofread these names before I read this. Be appointed on probation as a bus attendant effective January 9th, 2017 and ending September 8th, 2017. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level one, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Number three, appoint long-term substitute counselor, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Julie Levitt, Leavitt, be appointed as long-term substitute K-6 counselor replacing Tammy Orcutt effective approximately January 6th, 2017 through January 5th, 2018. Salary is based upon ETA contract masters plus 30, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Julie's out here, is she? Okay, thank you.
Number four, permanent appointment, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Martin Henry be permanently appointed as a bus driver retroactive to September 21st, 2016.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item five, permanent appointment, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Corinne Kenefick be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective January 18th, 2017.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item six, permanent appointment, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Paul Winter be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective January 18th, 2017.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item seven, appoint school psychologist practicum student, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Catherine Armbrust be appointed as an unpaid school psychologist practicum student effective January 19th, blah, blah, 19th, 2017 through May 19th, 2017.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Number eight, appoint extended leave substitu-, oh my gosh, what is my problem? Substitute teacher, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Eric Rosieck be appointed as an extended leave substitute teacher replacing Susan Wilhelm effective January 3rd, 2017 through approximately February 17th, 2017.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item C, approved extended leave substitute pay, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the extended leave certified teacher substitute pay rate of $95 per day be approved for the following substitutes in for elementary teacher Tiffany Quoz, Tammy Conjolosi, September 8th, 2016 through October 21st, 2016, and Kelly Beller, October 24th, 2016 to November 30th, 2016.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item D, accept donation of showcases, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the donation of two showcases for Mrs. Peggy Eisen Smith valued at approximately $200 be accepted for use in the junior senior high school in Eden Elementary School office for years.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item E, approve accessing of copier, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the high school main office Konica Minolta photocopier asset tag A00068316 model Bizhub 7222, did I do enough two? 7222, be accessed and disposed of as the district deems necessary.
Second.
What are we planning to do with it? Is it going up on, for auction or?
Put on eBay.
We haven't, we haven't discussed it yet. We're going to be looking at all the accessing because we'll be accessing more materials too, so we're going to figure out the best way to access. We have used auctions international for other stuff.
Right. Did those buses go out that?
We were. The one buses were actually on there. Which buses are you referring to?
Just the ones that we talked about two meetings ago when the kids got all excited?
Uh, I'll check with Dave. I don't think I know yet, but I'll check with Dave.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item F, approve best value standard, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approve the new best value standard of procurement of contracts as provided by New York General Municipal Law, I don't know what that sign is, 2-4-2.
Second.
Questions?
This is what I was just telling you about now. If we want to be able to award based on best value rather than just lowest bidder, you have to, number one, adopt it. So you're able to do that. And then number two, as you're going through for a bid, you have to put together a rubric to say, here's what we're looking at as our
This sort of apply to the capital project contract bids too?
It's just for the district to be able to do it as a whole, so it shouldn't preclude that at all.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item G, accept donation, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following donation valued at $514.58 be accepted from donorschoose.org for use in Sarah Fiorella's classroom. Four stools, $96.01 each, bouncy bands, eight at 11.86 each, and move and sit junior, one at $35.66.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item H, approve creation of part-time microcomputer repair technician position, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the creation of a part-time microcomputer repair technician repair technician, maximum of 19 hours per week, position be approved.
Second?
Questions or discussion?
My question is how do we, some of the emails flying around, we were discussing how would it be paid for? And though I am absolutely in favor of the position, I'm not in favor of taking the money from the capital project. I'm in favor of taking it from our budget to find an area where we can find X amount of dollars. It's my opinion that we're going to need this position past the capital project, and we shouldn't just use the capital project money for this. You should find it in our budget because we're going to have more microcomputers in our school over the next decade, and we're going to need an additional person. Secondly, I feel that we've got a lot of miles to travel in the capital project that I would hate to see. I think that money needs to be used for bricks and mortar and all kinds of stuff that are going to be part of the capital project. So that's my opinion. Yes, we should get the position, but it should be paid for out of our current budget.
Don't we're all going to do?
You're the money guy.
Well, you're the board, so I didn't want to just interject. So in terms of the capital project budget, it is budgeted in there for that as a separate line, which doesn't necessarily impact everything else going on with the capital project. If you don't spend it, you can obviously spend it on other items. So the way that it's written up in the agenda, it's written up to go through the general fund. It's not written up to go through the capital project. So you actually could have, I mean, it would just gone through the general fund right now, the way it's written.
That's fine if it comes out of the general fund. But as I said, we're going to need this position not only because there's computers moving around during the capital project and significant additional work with all the office moves and temporary places, but we're going to need this position because we're going to have a significant, the amount of technology is going to be much greater in the next several years.
That's with the grant and so forth, I agree with you.
Just to play devil's advocate, if we decide to pull it out of the general fund, does that prevent us from ever taking it out of? Pull it out, what do you mean? Well, if we decide to pay for it through the general fund, does that prevent us from ever returning back to the?
Capital?
Yeah.
Pretty much. Because here's what you're looking at. The capital has a shelf life of probably about two years. So if you go through the capital project now, you can fund it for about two years in the capital project. Then you can decide if you want to bring it over to the general fund. If you go general fund now, you're going to lose two years and you won't be able to touch the capital project at all. My question here is just a clarification, I'm not sure, because the way it's written up, it's written up as a part-time employee. So for the teachers for part-time, they end on June 30th. This one doesn't end on June 30th, it just rolls.
This one has, this one does not have an ending date on it right now.
So it just stays permanently as a part-time? Okay. So you can either just go completely in there, or you can go through the capital project and then over if you want to do that.
So the reason that it's written here is because we, Barbara might be better at explaining it than me, but civil service requires you to open a position for CSCE, for civil service positions, and the board to approve that opening of a position. Because we haven't had it before, there's no vacancy for it. We have to create the position and then hire on to it. It's different than teachers.
Correct.
Would you add anything to that?
We have something called a position inventory, and they tell us how many spaces we can have for each position in civil service. We're at the max right now with that one. So that's why we create the position, as Sandy said. And then when it comes time to hire someone, that's when you can decide to put them in for six months, nine months.
Right. This is just creating the position?
Or what fund you want to put them in. So tonight even doesn't really dictate hiring anyone.
This is just creating a position, it's really for civil service.
There you go.
But you said it was written up to come out of the general fund?
Well, right now, no, she corrected me, she's right. It's not a specific person, it's a position. So when you get to the specific person, if it's for the capital project, you would have to state to be paid out of capital project.
Or the general fund, whatever we decide.
Well, it defaults to general fund unless, I mean, just defaults to general fund. If you wanted to go through capital, you have to say this is through capital project.
I would simply add that if we don't pay for this position on the capital project, we're going to use that capital project money to just buy more doors and more windows and more mortar or whatever else. So it's not like we're going to lose that money, we're just going to spend it elsewhere. So I would reiterate, I'd just soon pay for it out of the general fund, bite the bullet out because it's a position that I don't envision going away with the capital project. It's not, I envision the need to be significant for this type of position.
I agree with Jack on it. I think, you know, just looking at the technology plan, I think we're light on the FTEs in the whole technology department as we move forward. You know, I think that's something, you know, we go through the budgeting process this year and the following year, it's something that we're going to need to take a hard look at. I mean, you look at other districts and they've got four or five times the amount of FTEs, much bigger schools, but you know, technology's technology.
We're going to have a lot of stuff. That stuff's going to be new. We're going to need people to make sure that it runs efficiently and effectively, and when we show up in the morning, everything's working so our students and our administrators and our.
And our board?
Our board and our teachers.
Get into their even.
Our spending time trying to figure out what the password is, they're spending time doing their job.
Mike, how do you feel about where it gets funded?
I agree with Jack on this one too.
Marlene?
Yeah.
I think we're pretty much in consensus.
Okay.
All right, so just creating the position. We had a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried.
Item I, approve smart school investment bond fund plan that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the smart school investment bond fund plan be approved as presented.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried.
Item J, approve increase in substitute teacher rate that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, effective December 31st, 2016, the daily rate for an uncertified substitute teacher be set at $70 per day.
Second?
What are we paying now?
We're paying 65, and if we left it at 65, we would be out of compliance with state law, which increased the rate on December 31st to 970 per hour.
Right.
So 970 per hour minimum wage. So we're going just over minimum wage. There's no judgment there, but we are complying with federal law.
All right, so I'm going to throw a real monkey wrench in. What does the surrounding districts pay?
It varies.
North Collins?
Let me not do it by district specific, just because we're on record. One district just approved retired teachers at $120 a day. Some districts north of us are at $110 for certified. Most districts are running between 75 and 95, but there's a shortage of subs no matter what you're paying. And so when one goes up, there's a domino effect on everybody else close by.
So we're at least trying to make sure we comply with law.
It's been in our budget, no, it's not going to change a thing. One district north of us went to 110 or so, and it also didn't change it much. So it doesn't mean that we shouldn't. We've had it on our budget wish list every year for the last three years, and it just gets cut out each year.
Any other questions or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried.
Item K, award 2016 capital outlay project bid that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bid for the 2016 capital outlay project at the Eden Junior Senior High School will be awarded to Morris Masonry Restoration LLC in the amount of $57,000. The base bid is $39,500, and the alternate is $17,500.
Second?
Discussion?
You should all be saying, yes, this is awesome, because Tom's going to tell you why.
Well, because the voters approved $100,000 capital outlay project, which they have now for the two years in a row. This is just a bid for it. And what you should know is, the bid came in under, so that's good.
Yeah, that's the yes part.
Number two, it can't go over the $100,000 that was approved for voters. And number three, it cannot go outside of the scope that the voters approved. So you already know, even if they could do additional work, we didn't know if we'd be able to get every part. We had three different options that were presented to the voters. Dave Martin presented during the budget process, and he said, we're going to try and do as much of that as possible. And so we're going to try and get as much done as possible, considering the fact when?
So now that we know it's at 57, we can take another $43,000 out of what's in our capital project, masonry work, and push it into the capital outlay and open that money up for something different.
Continue.
One door at GLP, I might be off by a couple thousand, but not much, is $75,000 at GLP because of the new regulations to make sure the doors are vented, and you can't just have the holes in the doors like some of the old doors are. So no one would ever, I certainly would never have thought of that. An interior door? Interior, classroom door. $75,000.
$70,000?
Because you have, not the door, but the whole workaround for the door, because you have to vent it, you have to vent it up through the, you have to vent it out of the room, because you can no longer have the holes as vents in the doorway anymore. Yeah. Crazy.
So you have to not only do the door, but you have to do the mechanicals around it to vent it to the exterior?
Yes. Yes. Yep.
Hey, Jack, you want to start a door company?
Mm-hmm. Yep. It'd be a conflict of interest.
Yeah. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried.
Item L, approve appropriations increase that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2016-17 appropriations be increased by $12,645.52 to $29,423,402.05 to account for increased revenues.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried.
Item M, approve appropriations increase that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2016-17 appropriations be increased by $13,170.85 to $29,436,572.90 to account for increased revenues.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried.
Item six, information and proposals, the business report.
Okay, the budget, what was that?
Two minutes.
Okay. The budget advisory team held its first meeting tonight, and two points to pass along. Number one, the first community forum, we took a look at the BAT schedule. It's a snow day on our first BAT meeting, which just kind of has pushed everything else back a little bit, and we looked at what was the best way to do this, not, really not have it during the break week and still fit everything in. So what we're looking at for the first community forum is on March 1st at 7:00 PM. So March 1st, the community forum will take place at 7:00 PM.
Barb, excuse me, Barb, could you get that on our web calendar?
Yes.
Thank you.
And those, the first one traditionally is taking place in the library, so Barbara, if you can check and see if we can still use the library for that one as well. So we will still have our budget meeting prior to that at 5:45. We've added some different departments on there. We'll put the revised schedule on my department's website, so everyone can see what the new schedule is actually going to be. Listen to.
Is there a reason there for library to sound just a little bit or not?
We can do it here. Yeah, you want to hear? We can do it here. Everyone okay here?
Yep.
Yep, no problem there. And then the second part with the budget, just to let everyone know, today we have heard from the governor's office. So everyone is aware, with the revenue side of the budget, there are two main components of our budget, the revenues. That is the taxpayers, and that is the state budget. So the taxpayers pay just over 50% of our budget, and just under $14 million. I'll talk about the tax levy in a second. But for the state budget, the way that it actually works is the governor comes out in January with his budget, that is the opening. And then after that, usually in March, you will see the Senate and the Assembly put forth their version of it. And then by April 1st, to be in legal compliance, the budget has to be adopted. Now, the governor hasn't always released his budget in January. We always haven't been in legal compliance and had a budget by April 1st, but for the last couple of years, at least for the last two, we've had a budget. So he came out and said for Eden, we are looking for foundation aid, an increase of $87,000 and change. So at least we know our base in terms of what he's talking about for foundation aid. So it's 87,000. On the other side of the revenue, we're looking at the tax levy. The tax levy, just to let everyone know, the state requires that we actually inform them by March 1st what the tax levy percentage is going to be, whether or not we're going to stay within the cap, or whether or not we're going to try to do an override for the cap. Now, that March 1st date is a little bit handicapping to most districts because it happens before we get the final budget from the state. Unless, we still have to actually have the board approve what is to be adopted and submitted by March 1st. So at the next meeting, we're going to be looking at the board saying at which rate you guys are going to be looking to actually go with. So stay tuned in February, and we'll have more on that as well. All right, for budget at this point, any questions? Okay, except for our business.
Superintendent's report, and there's no superintendent.
We're going to the board part, and we'll go back.
Yeah, she assumed I was going to keep going and go.
Yeah, she thought she had at least 15 minutes. She was going to actually pick up.
She's got me on here for a petition, which I'm thinking that's more Colleen's. I don't really know what petition she's talking about.
I think it has to do with putting pressure still on the.
The governor.
Oh, okay. I'm like, I haven't done anything. Well, here she comes, let's ask her. Do you want to do your superintendent's report? He's done, and then we'll talk about the petition then.
Yes, have a short.
So just very briefly, I wanted to state that the deadline for the wall of distinction is coming up at the end of January. We've pushed it out on Twitter, it's up on our webpage, there's some copies that are over here on the table. This is a first attempt this year, but the second attempt in many years by this district to push out a wall of distinction as opposed to an athletic hall of fame. And this one is for people who are not connected to athletics, that are alumni of Eden, that they have done something that has been distinctive for this community. And so I just encourage people to think about people they know from the community, whether they still live here or not, that are alumni, that have done something that has made a really big difference to this town. And along that line, since we have a town board member, it would be awesome to be able to look on that town website for famous people from Eden, because I can't find anything. So I would just encourage you to talk it up and see if there's someone. I am more than willing to extend the deadline just to make sure we have really great nominations. The other thing too, is that at the February board meeting, Young &amp; Right and Campus will come out to talk about what we've learned in the last couple of weeks, which is a lot. And it's about phasing and classroom movements, and where kids are going to end up being taught for a year or two. I can tell you that Tom's office is the first to move. Mike Breeden asked me to do that. No, that's not true, but.
Thanks, Mike.
Tom's office is the official first to move, though. So in February, we will lay all that out. But in the meantime, and I just wanted the board to know it, and thank you for, Marlene, for her suggestion this past week, is we're going to try to figure out how to get this information out to the parents as many times and as often as we can so that they're not concerned. We just didn't want to give out wrong information before December, and we just finalized it just a week or two ago. And as I told everybody, it's shared decision-making too. Capital projects are fun, but they're not fun while you're in them, and so I just fully expect everybody to be upset for two years because they're being inconvenienced. expect everybody to be upset for two years, because they're being inconvenienced. So, but everybody honestly has been wonderful about it. I have not heard any complaints from the teachers, and I really appreciate that.
All right. Okay, we're moving to the board report, and so, I'm on here.
You are.
If you wanna talk a little bit about any petition that we met about, and you don't have to if you don't. Colleen, I will say the...oh, my gosh, Julie. The Music Boosters put out a really good petition at the Christmas performance at the Eden Elementary School, and then I kinda fell out of the loop after that, and I wasn't sure that they put it at the high school. I know Angela had talked about having it up at the high school.
Yeah, we'll just add up to let her know we had a match, general board member, PTA Music Arts Minister, Mr. Murphy was Angela. Our primary goal is to promote advocacy again out there to our legislators and leaders that are concerned about our foundation aid. So, the first step was Angela, who's a teacher from Lake Shore, had experience with all those things that a few years ago. So, we came up with a petition, and I think they came up with 125 musicals. So, we backsend thank you to the help of the business office to teach us how to get the petition. We sent them to the chancellor of the board regions, and the whole FISA committee of the board region.
Nice.
They did receive them, because we called and they're like, "Okay, we did receive..."
Oh, good. Good.
And we checked twice, once with the chancellor and once with the FISA committee. And he said he would photocopy them for the rest of them.
Nice.
That would have done it a lot more times. So, they did get them. And we did notify our local board region person, so that if they said, "Got even," just sends us 125 things, and they're talking about financially, our foundation aid, that she was aware of it.
Okay.
So, our next step is, we reached out to the teachers association, and we wanted to roll it out to our legislators. The governor...
Pat Calvin?
Oh, DPHRO.
DPHRO.
They'll get asked up if you wanna like hand deliver, and I need to pack. And then, the governor's office probably will, like now, but we're back soon, because that's easier.
We appreciate all the work that the boosters has done.
Absolutely. It's been tremendous.
Yeah, it's been great, and it really has increased our efficacy. So, that's where we're now at. So, actually Karen just emailed me before, we have a plan to get it out in Penny's favor, to send things home to the parents.
Oh, that's great.
I'll give it back. We had some conversation with Mr. Murphy to do signatures online, and they just signed the petitions.
Yes.
So, we're...that's where we're working now, but we're definitely gonna roll it out in the next couple of months and scan out with it.
That's great. NICE-Ed. I reached out to NICE-Ed, but they never got back to me.
Excellent.
So, that's awesome. Do we have any...are there any other big events coming up in the next...
There are two big events coming up for Erie County Association of School Boards that is in your email. Both of them have to do with advocacy. One of them has to do with Rick Timms coming to talk about the state of the state with school finances. I'd encourage you to take a look at those emails, and let me know by Friday if you're interested in either one of them.
26th, and then the other one's on the 28th?
I think...I know one's on the 26th, the other one I have to look up.
It's a Saturday, I think.
One is definitely a Saturday.
Yeah.
But both of them are about advocacy, for sure.
And then, Sandy and I attended one, I can't even remember what it was called now. It felt like ages ago. What was that one we went to at Bosie's?
So, that was Erie County Association of School Boards as well, which is your new board group, which basically was a question and answer panel for people to get together, brainstorm, and figure out what their next step is, is advocacy.
Right.
That was nice that we were there.
It was interesting. And I did reach out to Mr. DPHRO, just on a personal note, I have some concerns with the proposed Secretary for Education. And I reached out to him, 'cause he is a huge supporter of public education, but he was also a huge supporter of Trump. And I was curious to know what his stance was, being a supporter of public education and Donald Trump, what his stance was on the nomination of DeVos. And I had not heard back from him, although I know he is in Albany doing voting stuff and whatnot, so...but it's still a long road. There's a lot to do, and I'm so thankful that the PTA has jumped on board and really increased people's awareness.
And the Music...the Arts and Music Boosters, too?
Yep, oh, yes, thank you.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know the teachers have started something with the Secretary for Education as well. Am I right?
NICE-Ed packs.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think at this time, we should discuss the direction we're heading with the budget, and now that we have some better numbers than we had the other day with the tax cap. So, we have some idea.
If we're gonna exceed it or not?
Right.
So, just to put some background to that, the board has to...I have to certify by March 1st what the number is that the board wants to go out with, which means that the board would have to approve at the February board meeting what that max tax cap...or what that max levy is. So, having conversations tonight is a good start, Paul.
Based on the risk versus reward that we discussed earlier, I would...numbers are gonna change, and that may change, at least my opinion, but there's a great deal of risk of trying to go out for a supermajority, both public relations-wise and having our budget not pass, and the reward is not significant at this point. And so, I would not be in favor of moving to a supermajority, 2% or greater vote. However, as we've seen, as my limited experiences, the numbers are very, very fluid. And so, if things start going wrong for us, we still do have 30 days or so.
Yeah, we only have until February 15th, we would have to make the decision.
Unless you did a special board meeting.
Right, the last week of February.
So, we have 30 days to see how much the numbers change, and if they don't change in the next 30 days, then I would say, "Well, I would not be in favor of going to a supermajority." I concur with Jack.
I would concur with Jack, too. If you get the answer for me, if we can back...
Go regressive.
Yeah.
And that occurred to me, actually, on the regressive part, even if we're able to do that, I think in all publications, even if you do go regressive, I think in all publications you'll still be...
Completions choose to...
Anyway.
Wow.
Because you're locking in a lot, so I think you'd still get it, even if you were able to.
Okay.
But I will double check.
It's that list Jack was talking about earlier.
Yeah.
Thoughts?
And I agree, I mean...
Yeah, I agree with Jack on that.
Something you gotta hold on to.
It's gonna be, you know, for the $102,000, it's not worth it.
Yeah.
And this way, we keep our...if we need to play that card the year...
Further down the road.
Or down the road, when it makes more sense, when we're in a more of a bind, I mean, we're always in a bind, but more of a bind, that we play that card down the road.
Okay.
All right, you have a draft of the facility use policy in front of you. We met, and it's only the top that you have to concentrate on. We stayed with four categories of four levels, but we did make some changes where in-house school-related groups are Level 1, and there will be no charge for them. Level 2, the nonprofit, 501(c)(3) community-based groups with focused on Eden residents, again, would be no charge. 50% charge to Group 3 would be the nonprofit 501(c) community-based groups focused other than Eden residents.
Or a large group.
Or a large group. Or if we require additional staff, which would be the large group.
Right, that's the large group.
And then, Group 4, for-profit organizations would be charged 100% for our cost.
So, this is a first opportunity for the board to see what the policy committee came up with. There's no thought to change it during this year, 'cause we're not budgeted for, so this would take effect July 1. But as for any other policy that the board has ever looked at, it needs to sit for 2. So, if you consider tonight 1, then at February, you could approve it. Or if you don't consider tonight 1, then it would be approved in March, Paul. Or not.
Well, let's hear some of the thoughts and see if we're gonna go forward as written.
I mean, it looks very similar to the last one. I mean, one of the changes is the yellow highlighted areas changes to maybe pricing, or is it just...
So, no, what it is, is it's a new software program that's not allowing us to do a max cap on a two-hour block. And so, we've started to play with the new software program and take a look at it on an hourly basis, but it's really not a change. It's just...I'm not sure it's gonna get listed like that on, you know, on our website. The difference is, this is focused on residents and not just kids.
Right.
So, our complaint may have been that we're doing something...PTA, a regional PTA meeting perhaps, or Boy Scouts could have been another one, but not lately, since the laws changed. But now, if they're benefiting Eden residents, there's no charge unless we have to pay something big, 'cause it's a bigger group.
So, and that's including now, like the play, there won't be charge for the play in those...so, there are some changes to this, where we have not charging in-house groups. Any other questions?
The musical would be considered Level 1.
Right. That's what I was just...
So, the big change is that where we used to charge even booster club groups or...
The musical?
Musical, for the use of the facilities to...
Like on a Sunday?
To raise money, to give right back to the kids, but they have to raise the money first to pay the school. We've eliminated those charges, so that those groups are free to use the school as they would free of charge. It is our belief that businesses should not be allowed to use the school and make a profit, but if that money is ultimately going back to the kids, and for example, alumni basketball games, we would have charged that group to use the gymnasium. But that money's...any money's being raised, they're gonna go back to the basketball team, while then, they would use the gym at no charge.
So, an important point to note, though, here is that we have a fixed budget, and so, and we also have union contracts. And so, we will have a certain budget set aside for this, and people who want to use it on a Sunday, where we're paying double time on a maintenance or a cleaner, we'd have to make sure that we have the budget to afford requests that are coming into us. So, it's not a carte blanche, open opportunity here.
And it's an important point. It's not, all of a sudden, I can use...what do you mean, I can use the gym anytime I want?
Right.
And...no, it's gotta be a request, and it's gotta be budgeted for, so that we understand what the request is. And it does not apply to the soon-to-be athletic facility...
Good point.
Down the hall. It does not apply to the turf field.
The stadium...let's call it stadium?
Stadium.
'Cause it would be the press box, the track, and the field.
So, though I think...my hope would be that we'd be very liberal with the use within school groups. It does not apply to that, and that would be a separate policy.
So, they would fill out the billing use, and then it would get approved?
The process itself is gonna look different, because of the new software, and we're still figuring out the new software. So, it's possible that a group that wants to use it with this software could designate what group they are. So, I'm PTA.
Someone decide.
And then, Kathy and Marissa, who are both responsible for coordinating building, facility usage, would see if it's accurate, if it needs to be modified. But we're still trying to figure that part out.
Any thoughts, Dan or Mike? All right. So, this is the first one. So, we'll have it on the agenda to vote in February.
Do you need anything, Barb, if it's the first read on this?
Regular motion.
So, he needs a regular motion?
So, make a motion that it'll be on the agenda for February for a vote and adoption.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Anybody have anything else?
Anything else from the board?
I just wanna say personally, I know there's not a lot of people here, but as a parent, I really appreciated the fact that we were closed on that freaking...
Good call. Excellent call.
Snow day.
Mary's still here, too. She was a part of it.
Excellent.
That was the 3:30 AM conversation on the phone.
Yeah, you went first, but there was a...
But it was Mary.
No, it was a really good call. I mean, they were all saying it was coming, and it came.
Did it come, Mike?
You know, the personal experience I had on the skyway, I think, was enlightening, I think.
Did you find yourself?
Yes. I've become one with myself.
Well, I was... You had a phone call, Mary, didn't you, from another district?
Yeah, we had a phone call from another school district about 4:30 in the morning that thought we might have been closing because of a water main or an electrical problem, because they felt we were crazy.
That's right. Well, who had the...
Did they stay open, that district?
They stayed open until 8:00 at night, and they probably... No, I did not really, but they did have buses stuck.
So, they did stay open, huh?
You know, I will say, as a parent, I felt good knowing that my kids were home with family safe, because I wasn't stuck in my car, but I was stuck in my building until 11:00 at night.
You were, that's right.
And...
With kids?
With a few kids, but our buses were all stuck on the road, and because my building is located on South Park Avenue, those kids couldn't get back to school. So, it was...
Yeah.
It was really crazy, and parents were freaked out and scared, and I don't blame them. I mean, it was like...it was bad.
It's a lot.
So, I appreciate that. I mean, I know...
Remember that when we make a bad call.
You know what?
I was gonna say, for all the grief you guys get...
I know. But I personally feel, even as a board member, I'd rather make a bad call and the kids be home for nothing...
Absolutely.